If someone wants a chair and does not have one, we have some chairs in the back. You can just bring them up here. If not, that's great too.
There's chairs down front.
Yeah. The front row is just like church is open.
Please all rise for the pledge of ladies.
Pledge of ladies. .................................................................................................................. Okay, Mrs. Zissing.
Here.
Mr. Kachasik.
Here.
Dr. Koschko.
Here.
Mr. Leonard.
Here.
Mr. Noel.
Here.
Mr. Neiman.
There.
Mr. Petrusi is on his way, I believe. Mr. Stovall.
Here.
Dr. Trey.
Here.
You have a form, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Lego. Communications, Dr. Butler.
No communications right now.
May I have a motion approved the minutes of October 8? Prior to tonight's meeting, we had an executive session for itself at 6 o'clock to discuss matters related to personnel, contract negotiations, and a student matter. Thank you. May I have a motion approved the minutes of October 8?
Motion. Motion by Mr. Neiman.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Zissing. Question.
Question being called for this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Information, Dr. Butler.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And I'm turning it over to our athletic director, Kerry Hetrick, who has some good news with some awesome student athletes of ours.
Thank you, Dr. Butler. Ladies, if you want over here for a minute, please. Mr. Hurst. Bring it through here.
Okay, we forgot something.
Okay, first of all, I'd like to tell you what we have here this evening. We have our WPIL champion, ladies golf team, PIA runner-up. After two years in a row, we came very close second, and actually, we got moved up a division this year into Division One. And we finally brought home the goal. These girls have worked hard. A lot of them have been members of this team for the last four years. And I'd like to attribute that to their leader here, and I'm going to introduce you to Coach Hurst, and he's going to introduce all the girls here. And you can see, they brought in their trophies to show off here.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here. We have Morgan Rector, Haley Borkovich, Roy Speckel, Elizabeth Papa, Mia Barketti, Maddie Vitale, Morgan Sarmack, Rachel Huber, and Casey Durant. And the record speaks for themselves as golfers, but they're better kids than they are golfers. I can guarantee you that. Some of the best kids we have. So, thank you. You guys want to say something?
Well, congratulations.
That's unusual.
This is, I've, we've been talking all year long because it was so close last year, and this year was just a great year. To come in second in the state and win the WHIP-ELs, that's unbelievable. And that's only part of it. Obviously, just being great people is outstanding. So, congratulations. Thank you very much. Does anyone doing golf in college?
Yes, I was going to ask that question. Any scholarships, maybe?
We have four seniors, and there's a good chance that at least three play. The other one is more of a dancer. And I couldn't help her there.
I'd like to see that. As would we all. Well, thank you very much. Thank you. I appreciate it. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next on the information, our student union representative, Eric Swope. Looking dapper as usual.
Thank you, Dr. Butler. Pen Trafford High School has had numerous events over the past month. Homecoming went extremely well last month, and students enjoyed all the festivities. The dance was held in the cafeteria this year and did not miss a beat. The student union is preparing for Red Up the Stands this year, and will sell red t-shirts for this new event. The event is for the American Heart Association and will take place during the Norman Double-Header Games on January 15. Students will wear red t-shirts during the games to support this great cause. On another note, every class traveled to Bushy Run Battlefield, toured the museums, and walked the battlefield. It was a great opportunity to break the routine classroom atmosphere and see history firsthand rather than in a book. Last week, the National Honor Society held inductions for the 2012-2013 members. The event honored juniors and seniors of high academic and community values. The first meeting for the food committee will be this Wednesday. Mrs. Duff from the school food service will meet with students to discuss ways to change the menu to make it more appealing. The community action program has continued their regular monthly service projects as well. New this month is Toys for Tots and Treats for Troops drive. CAP and NHS students will be collecting toys to distribute to children in need with cooperation from the U.S. Marine Corps. PTHS CAP students will be working on a project with students from Penn Middle School in conjunction with the American Red Cross. This Treat the Troops drive will begin in November and in the first week of December. Comfort and daily hygiene items will be collected and packaged for servicemen and women who have been deployed from local armories. This is an expensive but worthwhile project, so students are looking for local sponsors and donations.
Thank you.
Very good. Any questions for Eric?
How many kids were inducted into the National Honor Society?
Ninety-one. Ninety-one.
Very good. Thank you, Eric. Our next are Students of the Month and Mrs. Garner.
Hi, dude. Nico. Rotten center, tough guy. I'd like to introduce everyone to Nico Payne, who is a fifth grader at Trafford Elementary. He's the son of Nicholas and Robin Payne from Highland Avenue at Trafford. His teachers really gave him a glowing recommendation. He's consistently been a hard worker from kindergarten through fifth grade. As a fifth grader now, he's an awesome role model because he possesses so many qualities that are desired by all. He is always engaged and involved in his learning. He does well with his grades. He participates throughout the day. If he's not correct, he'll search for the answer until he finds what to fix and understands how to fix it. Asking questions is not a problem for him to have a better understanding of a concept. He shows respect to his teachers and his fellow classmates. He is admired by all. Nico understands when to be a good listener and when to voice his thoughts. He's always respectful of his classmates' answers and opinions. He's organized, punctual, and he's a joy to have in the classroom. Nico wants to be an engineer. I think you want to go into the automotive area of that. He enjoys math and social studies. He's a good student because his family encouraged his hard work. That's what he told us. He likes to play outside, football, baseball, and walk the dog. His dog Beagle Murray. Murray the Beagle, right? Okay. He has a brother, Josh, and a sister, Hunter. I don't know, are they both here? Okay, welcome. And his mom says, what can she say about Nico? He's certainly her most compassionate child. He cares very much about others' feelings and is cautious not to cause hurt. He loves school and never has to be told to do his homework. He does it as soon as he gets home from school. He's always been like this when it comes to school, and he makes her job as a mother very easy. He's not the strongest when it comes to household chores. But he makes up for it because he likes to fix things. His mom and his family love to watch him play baseball, and he's very good at it. He's just a typical 11-year-old boy that likes to play ball, video games, watch movies, and hang out with his friends. But he's also very mature, responsible, respectful, and mindful of others. His mother hopes that he never loses his love for school and especially his compassion for others. I'm very proud to be the principal where Nico goes to school. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Butler. I want to introduce Madeline Heiss, ma'am. My name is Madeline Heiss. Her parents are Jeff and Debbie Heiss, and she has a sister, Annabelle. She's a wonderful young lady and a self-motivated student. Her parents note that she's a very talented artist, a wonderful writer, and loves to read. This summer, she volunteered at the Pittsburgh Cure Sarko 5K Walk and Run, and she helped the runners by providing water and participating along the race while assisting up the race route, assisting others. One thing to know about Maddie, she is not PT bred. She came here, what, this past year? And first she lived in North Arlington and went to Norman, and then her family moved to Trafford. But in each case, she flourished. So, you know, being a middle schooler, first of all, can be tough, but going to a new school two separate times and doing as well as she has is outstanding. She also enjoys riding horses and taking care of her dog, Molly. And right now, she is considering being an architect. Talking to her sister, her sister reluctantly, I have to say, said she respects her because she's a hard worker and she always pushes forward to be her best. And with sisters, if you get anything positive, that's a good thing. So, that's an unmarkable approval. Speaking to her teachers, they say she's a terrific student, very kind, respectful, and humble. She leads by example. Another teacher said she's never looked at Maddie in class and not received a smile from her. She's always positive, polite, and hardworking. She says, "I have a daughter, and I hope when she grows up, she'll be the kind of young lady that Maddie is." The art teacher says she's an awesome artist, but even a nicer person. She's a pleasure to have in class. She comes in every day with a smile on her face and cheerfully does her work and helps others when needed. I'm very proud to be her principal, and for these reasons, I, Madeline Heiss, is our November Student of the Month. Great.
And our High School Student of the Month, Mr. Engle.
Vincent, come on up.
Vince, Vince is 11th grader at the high school, and he's here with his mom and dad, Judy, and Jim Baird, and I think he has some other family members here as well. But he's also here supported by his RE180 teachers, Mrs. Harris and Mrs. Hayes. And I noticed, Vince caught my eye. We, as you all know, we went to Bushy Run the last couple weeks, month or so, and, you know, when I was there, I saw this Indian all dressed up in the garb and war paint and all the jewelry and the musket and the knives and all the things that go with a 17th-century Native American of this area. And after digging around, I figured out it was Vincent Baird behind that war paint. And Vince has been doing reenactments now, I think, since he's been 10 years old, is what he told me. And he does the annual one in August, and he's very, very passionate about it. He loves it, and it was very obvious because when he was there, he talked about all the different things that go on with the Native American lifestyle at that time and how the Indians fought the British and the muskets and how it was loaded and unloaded and the cleaning of it. He talked about the war paint that was made and showed the kids there, the, you know, the different okers and different natural ingredients that are used to make that paint. It was just incredible to see the love and passion for this time period. And he brought it to life for all of our kids. And what was unique about it was, you know, on one particular day, some of the reenactors had to call off, and all they had left for them in one session was Vince. And here we are, a 16-year-old kid who's responsible for teaching over 100 high school kids, and he did it, and he did it exceptionally well. And he was poised, confident, and delivered it, and he had the attention of all the kids. And he did it in front of his teachers who were there, the principals that were there. And it was just a real joy to see somebody like that thrive in that environment and really go on to show the passion for that historical time period. So, it was just wonderful to see. I was very, very impressed with what he did. Took a lot of courage to do that, so you'd be commended for that. And Vince, thank you for it as well. Also talked to his teachers, Vince, all his teachers, couldn't say anything bad about him. He was just a wonderful kid, kind, considerate, very mature for his age, which is a common theme of a lot of people had said. Diligent worker, his work is exemplary. He's a gifted writer. Shows depth and insight beyond his years. He writes beyond the assignment. He keeps an amazing journal of poetry and the thoughts that he develops. And I think, are you going to talk about that a little bit here in a minute? I'm going to put you on the spot here. Vince, he's always the first student to step up whenever he needs some help in the environment that's in the English classroom. He's always there to help out kids who are struggling and who will always step up to the plate. One of the comments is, RE180 teachers had said, you know, they asked a question to the class, and Vince answered this way. The question was, "Who will you be in 20 years if your dreams were nourished and supported?" He said, "I'll be an amazing father and husband." So, what 16-year-old kid is going to say that? That's amazing. So, that goes to show you a little bit about his character and how he was brought up. Vince attends our Fear and Technology Center, Newsstand, and studies in the CAD tech shop. He also likes to work out with his father at the gym. He plans on becoming a draftsman or joining the National Guard or Navy. Vince is just the kind of kid that makes this a great place to work, so we appreciate having him. So, Vince, I'm going to put you on the spot now. You said you wanted to read a little bit from your journal, so.
I have one of them. I made up today. Miss Hayes wanted me to show you guys what I can do with poetry a little bit, and I'll see if I can show you guys what I can do. He hears crying and tears run down his face. He clings to loved ones but gets pulled away. He gives up hope and just wants love. He wants us, he wants, all he wants is to smile again. He gets picked up off the ground and finds his place. And then, I'd like to thank Ms. Hayes and Ms. Harris. You guys believed in me, and thank you for bringing me into the RE180 family.
Good job, Vince. Well, I have some time for pictures with all the elementary, middle, and the high school students, but I also want to thank the families. If you hear or listen about how wonderful and great these kids are, it's because of the family behind them. So, to the family, I want to thank you for having these wonderful kids in our school system. We appreciate it. So, if any, if the Students of the Month want to come over here, we'll get a picture for the paper, and you can go from there. Or you can come over and grab pictures. Well, thank you, family and Students of the Month for coming. We understand if you have other things that you would like to do tonight, go out and enjoy the rain, or just go home. We appreciate you coming here. You're welcome, more than welcome to stay, but we also understand you might have other things to do. But thank you very much. Thank you for raising great children. We appreciate it. It's fun. Thank you. One of my former students, when I was principal, Lance Corporal Michael Plank, he joined the Marine Corps in March of 2008 and was killed in action in Afghanistan in June of 2009. I remember going to his funeral and just struck at how, you know, you talk about sacrifice. I think people use that word. They don't really know what it means. And for sure, I sat there and talked to his friends, and he was 23-years-old. And it's kind of, it's a life-changing experience, I think. I've never had to do anything like that before. So, if you don't mind, I would like to have a moment of silence for all veterans, past and present, who have served because we have to remember them every year. Thank you very much. Our next is Mr. Marasty, and he is going to talk to you about some innovative programs that are happening at McCullough Elementary School. You are up, Mr. Marasty.
Thank you very much, Dr. Butler. I'd like to start the whole conversation. These pilots, these programs, these strategies that you're going to see, and it's just a nutshell of what's taking place at McCullough, have been brought about by the professional development that has been afforded to the teachers. This professional development, unlike any other year, this is the first time that I've been in the district, that I've heard the comments, "This was great. We needed it two days." There's so much, my head hurts. I mean, those are comments that you typically hear, "That professional development was terrible. I'm exhausted." I haven't heard that this year, and it has translated into the willingness of these teachers, this staff, to run with these strategies, these objectives. Some of the things you'll see, the Singapore math is something that is a new way of thinking about how do the students do math. And they're doing it through illustrations, they're doing it through models, and it's a completely different thought process, but it becomes relevant to the students. Each one of the grade levels that was represented at that professional development is doing something in it. First grade, for instance, they have bracelets that they just use pipe cleaners, they put beads on, and it's serving as an abacus, so the kids literally are just moving it on their wrist. You look at them, they're understanding that. They're doing a part-part-hole, which is, if you think of an illustration, you have a face with two ears. They'll have a total amount, okay, a product of eight. The eights in the middle, what makes eight? They put six and two in the ears, four and four, five and three. Just different ways of thinking about, and how do I get to that answer of eight, that sum of eight? Second grade's doing same type of thing, the part-part-hole. They've also incorporated in what they call their bullwinkle part of it, and literally, it's taking your antlers, and the teacher will say, "Give me eight," and the students will give me eight. And they just, they keep flipping their antlers to give that correct amount. The teacher will put one hand up and go, "Give me six," and the students have to turn around from there. So, it's a movement. They're getting up and moving with that. Third grade has embraced it a lot, as well as fourth grade. You're seeing a lot more models being drawn. They're breaking problems down into basically sentence parts. The students are understanding what those parts exactly are for and how do I get a solution? They start with an answer statement. Before they even begin to solve a problem, they have to generate an answer statement. It is causing them to think, and when I say "them," I'm talking about the students, the critical thinking's been tremendous. They really have to think about problems. It has also lent itself to fourth, fifth grade, we're getting away with a lot of multiple-choice questions. Suddenly, multiple-choice has disappeared, and now we're getting higher-end thinking, higher-order thinking with analysis types of questions, and they're actually asking the students, and I shouldn't say actually asking the students, the students are now being required to respond to questions, "Well, what did that person feel like?" as compared to just a simple yes or no. So, they have to infer, they have to do a little comprehension and understand the problems of that nature. But it really gets back to the illustrations. They're drawing problems out and solving them that way. The other in-service that was very good was PLN, Pennsylvania Literacy Network. It's more for the upper grades, but it has trickled down into the writing in first and second grade. Fourth grade has really embraced it. They came back after two days of sitting in service and said, "We need binders." And I went, "You need binders?" And they said, "Yeah, we're going to write and sign social studies and put in math. We're going to use a new organizational tool." They're brainstorming before they read. The teacher's asking a question before they read. The students are being responsible for writing a response prior to reading about inferencing and what that story is going to be about. Students generate questions, they're pair-sharing, they're talking more. It has really shifted the focus of the class from that of the teacher to now it's student-centered. And it's really exciting and fun to watch when you hear the discussion that third, fourth, and fifth grade have had, but you just really haven't realized it until you see it now. Fifth grade is incorporating novels into it. They've stepped away from the McGraw-Hill textbook for the second unit, and they're doing all those skills taught in that second unit through the use of a novel. And they're incorporating in the PLN training with that, so they're doing a ticket-in-the-door, ticket-out-the-door. It has been exciting. First grade, they went to a conference two, three weeks ago, and what it has lent itself to, the name of the conference is No More Work Sheets. And in this, it's about movement and transitions. Literally, the students, and it's primary-based, K1, some 2, the students are up and moving. And the whole premise behind the movement is to get both hemispheres of the brain working. And to do this, the students need to cross their midline. So, literally, if you think about splitting your body in half, going back and forth and crossing your midline. The more readily a student has, can get across that midline, the more ready they are to read. And it's interesting to watch the kindergarten and first grade, as they get up and they move, it is difficult for the students, some of those students, to cross that midline, to get across. And they'll count by fives, five, 10, 15. They're doing a lot more with music because they've also found that music is a placeholder in the brain for remembering things. So, you're seeing a lot more. So you're seeing a lot more movement, you're seeing a lot more excitement outside that traditional sit and rows, here we are. It's been very good. But I want to go back and reiterate, I can't thank Dr. Butler enough for bringing in the correct professional development, professional development committee that's here in the district of the staff. They have been able to get together and do a tremendous job. It is very exciting, very rewarding, and the teachers are actually looking forward to in-service days, that they can get done. So on that, I want to thank all of you. It's really caused a lot of excitement in McCullough, and I know through discussion it has done the same at the others, but thank you for that. Should you have any questions, anytime, please feel free, call, stop in, see what's going on. I think the parents, with visitation being this week, tomorrow through Thursday, are going to see some different things and cause some different questions, which will be good. But thank you, Dr. Butler.
Thank you, Mr. Marasti. I think, you know, it's essential in 21st century that kids have problem-solving, critical thinking skills, and how can we start that at a young age? And across the district, and I asked Mr. Marasti to speak, just because there's, I've been in that building a little bit more lately, and we are starting that process of problem-solving and critical thinking at kindergarten, at first grade. And we're going to continue with that, but the reason that we're there is because the Professional Learning Committee last year designed, "This is what we need." A group of teachers got together and said, "This is what we need to improve our practice to get engaging instruction in our classrooms." So it's wonderful, it's wonderful to watch, and it's, you know, I've taken people into classrooms, just to see, I said, "You've got to come and see this." Ted, our intern, my superintendent intern, whose last day was today, he just is amazed every time we go into class and the different instruction, engaging instruction that he's seeing. He just loves it. So thank you, and it's just, it is, it's good stuff happening, for sure.
You know, a couple comments. I was at church yesterday, and I happened to see a teacher, and I asked him, "What do you think about what's going on in the Pentraff School District right now?" You know, from a teacher's point of view, you know? And he said, "It's very exciting." He said, "If five years ago someone would have told him that our goal was going to be one of the top districts in the state and in the country, he would have said, 'No way.'" He said, "But with the things we're doing right now, he says, 'I believe we can do it.'" And last year, you set up a day where Galish and Jay and I went into the schools, and I personally was so impressed that I brought a student teacher, someone who was going on for their masters in education. I don't know if you remember that. I came over to solve my buddies at Sunrise. And they were impressed, because the schools that they were in, this particular person was in, they weren't doing anything like that. So they were very impressed. And I'd like to go back, if you want to set up another day, I'd like to do another day, seeing some of the other schools.
Absolutely.
It was very impressive, and I'm very excited about it.
Yep, absolutely. We'll do that again, for sure. We had a school district here today, visiting one of our elementary schools. A local school district came in and wanted to see what was going on. So it is exciting times. A great foundation, of course, has been built here, and the teachers now are just taking off because of that. So, good, thank you. One thing that we'd like to talk about, Mrs. Enick is over there. She's in charge of Coffee for a Cause, and she's going to spend a minute or two just updating you on that experience and some of the growth that we've had in Coffee for a Cause.
Okay. Hi, everybody. I just want to thank everybody for letting us come tonight, and I wanted you to be able to see the students, and hopefully you were able to enjoy some of the products that we have in there. But I wanted you to know now that we've expanded our area, we're able to have the students in the study halls come into the library, and they're able to use a larger portion of the library. And also, we've expanded the time that we're open. We're open in the morning periods, 1 through 4, and then in the afternoon period, 6 through 8. So it just gives our students, my life skills students, an opportunity to interact with their peers more than even they did last year. Also, it gives us an opportunity to give even more back to our community through our donations. So that's, you know, just a great opportunity for my students and for also the students here at the high school. And I wanted to also update you on some of the new things that we have in the coffee shop. We have a new cash register, thanks partially to a donation through the WIV grant. We received a cash register that's a little more updated than we had last year, and it offers our students an opportunity to use a cash register that they would find in a real set, like a Sheetz or McDonald's or something like that. It's a touchscreen cash register. Our hope is also to expand that even to our ordering system. It has that capability to hook something like that up to it. So it just gives us a lot more ability to expand, and it gives our students a lot more training in a cash register that they can use in a real business. Also, we have partnered with the technology department. Hopefully, you know it's our Warrior Outlet, which is, we're selling clothing and different things that are, Mr. Dusum and the technology department is, their student, his students, I'm sorry, are making these products, and we're selling them here at the coffee shop. Also, we have the coffee mugs that we're selling for the astronomy club here. There's a picture here of them. And so all that money's going back to the astronomy club, and we're selling them here at the coffee shop. So we've just kind of made this sort of area for the students here at the high school to come, and, you know, this is during their study hall time, but then they also can, you know, purchase things and make donations to different clubs and things like that. So it's just worked out really well. And just so you know, because of our expansion and the different things that we've been able to do, last year, our total donations to the different charities was almost $7,000. This year, for just two months here in the coffee shop, we donated $5,000 to the United Way. So I just want to let everybody know that, you know, because of that, we've, we've got a job coach here, and she's worked down here all day long. You know, last year, I had the opportunity to be down here, but now Mrs. Rush has kind of taken the lead, and she's down here with the students. She's a job coach down here, so it's a real big help to me, and I appreciate all her help, too. But I just want to thank everybody for the opportunity, and I know my students enjoy it, and their parents are very excited about the things that they're learning, and it's just a good opportunity for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Enick. We appreciate that. I asked Mr. Carazia to speak about this, and he said, "We have to talk to the expert, and the expert is Mrs. Enick." But obviously, without the leadership of Mr. Carazia, this wouldn't have been where it is either, so I appreciate that as well, Greg. Mr. Vinton, do you want to introduce the people that are working for you here today?
Sure. Over here, we have Alyssa Waldron and Brian Nemec. And back here in the center of the camera, we have Vice President of Video Club, Al Blantaga.
Right.
Right here, we have Eddie Sheehy, the President of Video Club, and Nick Sarnelli.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Vinton. We have, in a related note, we had the Pentraff Community Education Foundation at a meeting Thursday, and we, through the United Way, will receive two donations. One from the Coffee for a Cause, that will go to the United Way, to the foundation, for $5,000. And also, the faculty, through the work of Mr. Hetrick and Cap, Mr. Cap, through Dress Down Days, raised another $5,000. So the foundation will be getting $10,000 through the United Way, through our different organizations here. So that's an outstanding number. And Carrie and Cap did such a good job at organizing it this year and getting that $5,000, I can't imagine not having them do it next year. Or the year after, or maybe even the year after that.
No pressure.
But that's good news for our foundation. That's a significant amount of money, and we can do a lot of good, the foundation can do a lot of good with that money. These kind of things are all over the place here for my information. The next information is, I know that in an effort to be more transparent, if anybody wants information about the board meeting, everything from the meeting tonight, the motions, any information in the packet will be posted on our website tomorrow morning, probably around 8:00 a.m. So that's our standard operating procedure. The Friday before the board meeting, the agenda is posted, so if anybody can look at the agenda and see what's going on, so they can decide whether they want to come and enjoy a meeting. And finally, Dr. Trey, want to talk a little bit about Toys for Tots?
Briefly, if you don't mind. It's been 20-some years since our school district and our community has been involved with Toys for Tots, and it's a pleasure to be a part of it. I'd like to say we're kind of like a well-oiled machine now, which a lot of the oil is right over here, and our principals are very much supportive of the whole process, help with the organizational structures. Our teachers are well-involved in the process, support staff, community members, students. We've been generous above and beyond for over 20-some years. As our student representative indicated, the drive begins next week. We actually have sign-ups in the area, county-wide. Been in our area, it's at Christian Life Church, and then the Cavalry Assembly also handles the other end of the area for sign-ups this weekend and also following weekend. We appreciate everybody who's been a part of it and their generosity and goodwill, and it's really helped so many kids over the holidays, and please participate again. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Trey. And, Mr. President, that is my information.
Thank you, Dr. Butler. At this time, we will be doing visitor recognition. The following rules are in effect. You must state your name, address, and group affiliation, if any. Your statement will be limited to five minutes in duration. All statements shall be directed to the President, and hope to discuss any address or question of board member individually. I may interrupt you if your statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. This time, we have one who'd like to speak, Jeffrey Jackson.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Jeffrey Jackson. This is my wife, Michelle. Our address is 1066 Government Road in Irwin, Pennsylvania. We've been residents of Pentraff for now going on eight years. The reason I'm here is twofold. Number one is, you know, I heard a number of you talk about putting education in the forefront of Pentraff, you know, being one of the number-one schools, not only in West Wallon County, but in the country. And to do that, you know, in budget or no budget, and I'm very well-aware of budgetary constraints around, also around the school districts, it's an absolute travesty that you do not offer full-day kindergarten. That's where it starts. And if you want to put Pentraff on the forefront, it starts there. It doesn't start in first, second, or third grade, it starts at kindergarten. And that's something I think we do need to look at and spend our money wisely, and make sure we do have our kids here in full-day kindergarten. It works. It definitely works. Second reason I'm here, my wife and I decided to take our kids, five-year-old twins, a boy and girl, to their first football game against Kisske area High School. We are absolutely appalled of what we saw and what happened to our kids. They actually were fearful of coming in and leaving. We saw kids on the ground behind the stadium. We saw, we heard swearing. We heard a number of sexual connotations. We did not see one adult. We did not see one administrator that could take care of any of this for us. Leaving during the third quarter, my wife and our two kids actually had to step over somebody who was just laying on the ground being silly. For a district of this caliber, that's uncalled for. And it may seem inconsequential to you, but I went to get popcorn for our kids. I went in the very beginning of the first quarter, I came back with one minute left during halftime. I've coached all around the United States for football. I've been to stadiums three times the size of Pentraff. And to not be able to serve popcorn, and looking around this room, I would think we would be able to do that. And that afforded me the opportunity of not even to be able to spend time with my family, because I'm waiting down there to just wait on popcorn. And I know that may seem insignificant to you, but when we go to our first game and we're getting all dressed up, ready to go, we were just, we were appalled. And I'm sure that there were administrators there, but we didn't see them. And if we're not seeing them, I'm sure other people aren't seeing them. And I may be the only one to complain about this, but I would like you to please take notice, if just one family can come to your stadium and see students act and talk like that, one family should be enough of a concern for you. Thank you.
I apologize for your experience at the football game. I know that Mr. Ingles and our assistant principals and other administrators are at the game and sit with the kids, normally near the student section right there. They sit either right behind them or right with them. But we, and as far as we have our school police, and they're involved there as well. But we'll make sure that that's one thing, obviously, that we should pay attention to, and we for sure will. So thank you.
With regards to comments regarding full-day kindergarten, obviously, as a board, we'll take that into consideration as we move through the new budget process. But as a board member, too, I apologize for your experience at the football game. Obviously, we want the kids to enjoy the enthusiasm, the excitement of the game, but obviously, we don't want them walking away with a bad experience. So for the board, I apologize as well that you guys were involved in that type of scenario. But from a leadership perspective, most of the folks from administrative are at those games and are strategically located, as well as security, but we'll make sure we keep a sharper eye on those type of things as well. So thank you for coming forward. Appreciate that. Anyone else that would like to speak who's not on the list?
I can hear a little bit late, but you can do it.
It's okay. Go ahead, Sally.
And I don't know if you can answer my question. Sally Bradley, 847, State Route 130, Trafford. With the bond issue that I guess we're going to vote favorably for tonight, or at least I'm assuming that's correct, if I'm right. And it was a Plan Con not being in effect now, and it might not be in the future, we don't know. On the last building project, the money we earned through interest on the bonds, we had to do one of two things. Either build a capital improvement, which is why we did Warriors Center and the two tracks, or return it to Harrisburg. Obviously, Harrisburg wasn't going to get any more money. If Plan Con doesn't become effective, will we then be able to spend that money on anything we want, like education for students, or anything that improves their life, technology, or legal expenses? Can we spend it for anything?
That's a great question. You know, the Plan Con thing, we're going to move forward as if Plan Con will be funded. You know, we don't know that for sure. Either way, the board feels strongly that this building needs to be addressed regardless. And in the past, there could, there was that money, your money could make money because of the interest rates. Right now, the interest rates are so low, it's negligible, because Brett and I have talked about that, because Nick mentioned that to us as well. And it was addressed, I think, last Monday, that because the interest rates are so low, I'm taking Tony's thunder, because I am now a financial expert, I suppose. The interest rates are just negligible, so there really is not an opportunity for the board to realize any gain.
Yeah, we're not going to realize, maybe we can get $5, yeah.
Right. We would definitely find a good use for that.
And it could be for anything, yeah.
Right.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yep.
I would just like to say one thing about the, I've always been in favor of all-day kindergarten, but that means we have to find the teachers. And we've lost in the state subsidy $1.2 million in the last two years. That makes things pretty difficult. I just want to respond to what you said. There has been some discussion, all-day kindergarten, and I tell especially these kids for 36 years. Early intervention, I think, is very, very important, but finances are finances, too. I just want, I just know it's been, it's never been mentioned, but it has been mentioned.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trucey. If there's no other residents who'd like to speak, we'll move forward with today's meeting. May I have a motion to approve the treasurer's report and the high school extra credit fund report?
Motion.
Question by Mrs. Zissig.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard.
Question.
A question being called for, this is a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. May I have a motion to approve the last list of bills for the month of November?
Senator.
Motion by Mr. Petrusi.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nemick.
Question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Old res- old business, Mr. Buck, Dr. Butler?
No old business, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, we will not be having any executive session at this time. New business, athletics and extracurricular, Mrs. Zissig?
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve the following conference request for Glenn Cooper, Athletic Training Education Conference in Dallas, Texas, from January eleventh through thirteenth, 2013, at no cost to the district. Inter-association task force preventing sudden death in the secondary school setting in Washington DC from February fourth through fifth, 2013, again at no cost to the district. NFHS NATA Conference Helmet-to-Helmet Contact Workshop in Indianapolis, Indiana, on November nineteenth, again at no cost to the district.
Second.
Second by Mr. Petrusi, question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Okay, move to accept the following resignations, Lynn Eckberg, newspaper sponsor at Trafford Middle School, Nancy Marinselen, seventh and eighth grade assistant girls volleyball coach at Trafford Middle School, this was a shared position with Patty Arzenti, and Patty will now take over as full, uh, the full position. Heidi Scrimvin, seventh and eighth grade girls head volleyball coach at Trafford Middle School, Derek Guthbert, boys' head soccer coach at Penn Trafford High School.
Second. Second by Mr. Noel, question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Okay, move to approve the opening of the three assistant boys' soccer positions at Penn Trafford High School due to the resignation of Mr. Derek Guthbert as boys' head soccer coach, this is according to district policy.
Second. Second by Mr. Noel, question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
And my last motion, move to employ the following personnel, new employment is contingent upon the receipt of all necessary documentation and the acceptance of Act 34, 151, and 114 waivers from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania within thirty days. Nick Lynn, seventh and eighth grade girls head volleyball coach at Trafford Middle School.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nemick, question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mrs. Zissig, budget and finance, Mr. Kachasik.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve the resolution authorizing the 2012 go-bond issue.
Second.
Second by Mr. Petrusi, question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Uh, that is all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Kachasik. Buildings, grounds, and safety, Mr. Leonard.
Thank you, Mr. President, I do have one motion under buildings and grounds, I'd like to make a motion to employ the following personnel, Linda Bachman, be a custodian in Harrison Park, uh, position number four, shift will be 4:00 PM to 10:00 PM, effective Tuesday, November thirteenth, 2012, and the rate of pay will be $14.60 per hour.
Second.
Second, Mr. Kachasik, question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
And congratulations, Linda.
Congratulations, Linda.
And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard, floor relations, negotiation, transportation, Mr. Stovall.
Uh, nothing to that, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Stovall. Food service, Mr. Nemick?
Nothing to that, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Nemick. Personnel and curriculum, Mr. Petrusi.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve the list of additional substitute teachers for personnel for November 2012.
Second.
Second by Mr. Noel, question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Move to approve the following family medical leave request, Tracy Glumbaugh, Deborah Hyde, Breann Haywood, Mark Millavas, Janice Oliver, Ramona Pope, Eugene Reddish, and Tiffany Stewart.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kachasik, question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Move to issue professional contractors with following teachers in courts with a Section 1108 of School Law in Pennsylvania. These teachers have satisfactorily completed three years of teaching in the Penn Trafford School District in Allen Grove, Tennessee. Tara E, Penn Trafford High School, Jenna Huplin, Level Green Elementary School.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard.
Question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Move to approve Miss Fosson's agreement for student number EX 201, 213001.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nemick.
Question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Move to approve the following conference request, Janice Scors, Do It All and Do It Right Center on Morgantown, West Virginia, on December thirteenth, fourteenth, 2012, the total cost is $795.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Zissig.
Question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Move to approve the following resignation, Melanie Halsted, Library at Harrison Park Elementary School, effective November ninth, 2012.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kachasik, question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Move to employ the following personnel, new employees contingent upon the receipt of all necessary documentation and acceptance of Act 34, 151, 114 waivers from Commonwealth of Pennsylvania within thirty days. Alice Kleinschmidt, Library at Harrison Park Elementary School, effective November second, 2010, at $10.08 cents an hour. Dorothy Sullivan, Fair Professional, Harrison Park Elementary, effective November twelfth, 2012, at $9.35 an hour. And Daniel Ranello, Fair Professional, Sunrise Element, Sunrise Estates Elementary, effective November twelfth, 2012, at $9.35 an hour.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard.
Question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Move to approve the following long-term substitute teacher, new employees contingent upon the receipt of all necessary documentation, acceptance of Act 34, 151, 114 waivers from Commonwealth of Pennsylvania within thirty days. Cynthia Berger, Trafford Elementary School, from Mark Millavas, August twenty-third, 2012 to November fifteenth, 2013.
Second.
Second by Mr. Noel, question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
So, I have it, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Petrusi. Policy, public relations, legislation, Dr. Trey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Four items, move to accept and file the minutes of the superintendent's information slash committee meeting held on Monday, October first, 2012.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard, question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Move to appoint Mr. Nick Petrusi as the Central Westmoreland Current Technology Center Joint Operating Committee Representative for term expiring in December 2015.
Second.
Second by Mr. Noel.
Question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
I abstain.
Motion carries.
I would like to thank fellow board members for your ass support, I will continue my due diligence in the pursuit of the, uh, continued excellent education provided by Currit Technology Center, Central Tech, and also, um, in pursuit of the renovation project, which I hope will goes, uh, full speed ahead, and right now, I still don't know, I discussed this last week, and I will know more in a December meeting, apparently, now, and I will also continue to give you a very detailed, thorough, giddy report every month. That's all, Mr. President.
Uh, move to approve revised policy number 249, bullying and intimidation, as presented to the board.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Zissig, question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Move to adopt policy number 123.1, recognition utilization of club sports, as presented to the board.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard, question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Trey. Taxes, insurance, census, Mr. Noel.
I have nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Noel. Solicitor's report, Mr. Russell Lucas.